Almost six o'clock, everybody here look like, oh, I'm missing anybody?
Where's Rich? Who's Galt Council, is that Rich?
That's what we switched our council chambers to because it was messing up so bad last time with me logging in to a couple of computers.
Tina, hang on for just a second. Okay, go ahead.
You know, council member Lozano, yeah, he's here.
Thank you for whoever let me in, I appreciate it.
You're thinking about it.
You're welcome.
All right, almost six o'clock, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October twenty twenty twenty, this is a regular city council meeting. Due to ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue handle our city council meeting much different than we usually do, due to the protection of public and our staff. Now I would like to ask our city manager, give us a brief explanation to the public, Mr. Heinz.
City Manager Lorenzo Heinz, good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council was being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay at home orders. And as allowed by the governor's executive order in twenty nine dash twenty, which allows for the deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held by teleconference or video conference until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda items subject to the customary five minute time limit unless the same individual appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take the live comments first and the written comments will be read out loud. We are continuing the use of webinar, of the webinar format that allows the public to provide live public comment using the Zoom webinar feature. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called upon to speak at their line and their line is unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds or do not want to speak. If you do not see these features on your Zoom module, you are using a software that is not up to date or because there may be another technical issue on the user's end. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Call the meeting in order. Tina, may I roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Please rise for silent prayer and flag salute. Flag salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tina, could you read a deep, please, statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, October twenty third at nine AM and Saturday, October twenty fourth at nine AM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
All right, moving along, next agenda item, agenda council, any agenda approval, addition or deletion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to pull F one, the minutes, there was just a an error I wanted to point out that I just saw late in the day today, I'm sorry, Tina, and then F five.
So councilmember Farmer, you want to pull F one and F five?
Yeah, please, thank you.
All right, next agenda item, C presentation, we have a two presentation, the first presentation is Great Galt Pumpkin Hunt Parks and Recreation Department, I think, Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Armando Solis Parks and Rec Director. I'm going to be turning this over to our special events manager Jackie Garcia to go over these two great events that she's been planning.
Jackie, I muted your line, you can go ahead and present. Jackie?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. I'm excited to share with you this first event called the Great Galt Pumpkin Hunt. This is the first year that we are bringing this to Galt community residents. What it will entail is the first, starting next week, October twenty sixth, we will kick off the Great Galt Pumpkin Hunt and encouraging the community to follow the Galt Market page for fun and free citywide pumpkin hunt. What we will do is put clues, one clue a day to encourage them to track down five pumpkins that will be hidden in local businesses throughout Galt. Whoever the winner is that will win on the pumpkin, there'll be a little ticket that'll have the information on where they will collect their spectacular Halloween basket at the market. And then following that week, then that will have the final event, which will be the Spicishly Fun Movie Night. Is there any questions on the pumpkin hunt?
Anybody have any question?
Where will the clues be posted?
The clues will be posted on the Galt Market Facebook page, which is at Galt Flea Market. And they will be, so we'll start posting kind of like fillers out there this week, letting them know, be on the lookout for the first clue on Monday, encouraging people to follow our page on our Instagram as well. So it'll track and increase our audience for our flea market page as well. So that'll be posted starting this week.
So the, so there'll be clue posted about where the location is for that, for that first, for that first of five pumpkins and then whoever the first is to locate that first pumpkin at the particular business will have the ticket that's on the pumpkin or whatever that shows them what they've won and where to pick it up and then there'll be additional clues the next day for the next pumpkin or something, is that how it works?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We want to move on to the Spicishly Fun Movie Night?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so the next one is following the Great Galt Pumpkin Hunt. We will end with our Spicishly Fun Family Movie Night. This was in place of our movie night that we did at Veterans Field last year. So what the idea was is since we aren't able to do that and have people congregate, we thought, well, what's the best way that we can get people to enjoy still the Halloween activities? So we created a Halloween trick or treat lane as well as a drive-in movie night. So the attendees that will come through will drive on the one-way between the market grounds and the sports complex. Currently, we have about thirty seven businesses that are participating in this trunk or treat. So businesses will be decorated, decorating their vehicles, giving out candy to the drive-through kids that will hopefully pop out their pails, be excited and give the, get the candy. And then once they go through trick or treat lane, then they will either have the option to turn into the area where we're doing a twenty-two minute movie of Toy Story of Terror and/or they can exit the one-way. And so what we're looking for is the partnerships of the businesses really are excited to be partnering with us and giving out candy to the community and just providing a free community event. Any questions?
Anybody, any question?
I'd just like to make a quick statement, I just wanted to let the council know that this event has been submitted for review and approval by the Sacramento County Health Department. So they have reviewed this, they have approved it, and we are in compliance with their guidelines.
Thank you. Any council member, any other question, comment, otherwise I'm going to move to the next agenda item.
I just have a quick comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I want to thank Armando and staff for putting this together, you know, in these trying times. We haven't had many community events and, you know, they did the one in late June honoring our heroes and now this. It's really showing that they're trying to work outside the box to try to create an environment for people to come together as safe as they can. And I really appreciate the work that they've done on this.
Thank you, council member. I, Jackie's done a great job in this position and she deserves a lot of that credit.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to echo that as well, too. I was going to say something at the end, but just Jackie probably won't be on the line then, but yeah, thank you for doing this, guys, I know it's really difficult. You know, and what's going on with the, you know, with the pandemic and all, to be able to still do things in these tight parameters that you have. So good job and it looked like they're going to be a lot of fun, so hopefully we'll get a lot of participation. So thank you, Jackie and Armando.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your patience with the youth commission and all their questions, trying to help you guys out. Those kids, those kids want it all defined, I just love how their minds work. So really excited to have their, them out there, it looks like, how many, did you say how many vendors, Jackie?
There's thirty seven businesses participating.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Solis and Ms. Garcia, you know, bringing this event, thank you. All right, next agenda item D, public comments.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US zero two web dot zoom dot US forward slash J forward slash eight six five one six one three two nine three zero webinar ID eight six five one six one three two nine three zero.
Thank you. Anybody on the Zoom webinar?
We have no public comment on the attendee side.
There is no hand raised, right, online?
Correct.
Tina, there is any written comment?
No written comment.
All right, thank you, then I'm going to move the next agenda item E, reports by a city council member on regional board, commission and committee. I would like to ask councilmember Farmer, and then we can go around in regard to League of California Cities Annual Conference Virtual Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, do, do we want to just maybe ask anybody else to go first? Because mine will take just a couple, two, three minutes to go over and then if anybody else says, I can just finish up.
I think, go ahead.
Okay.
Then we can go down.
Okay. All right, thank you. So for those of you watching, League of Cities is a convention, more or less, every year that council members will attend. And it's, it's a gathering of council members and city managers and other city officials. And there are sessions based on different topics. It's actually a really good resource, first year I went, there was several hundred people there. You're able to really kind of network with other council members and it's really, it's really informative because you can speak to other cities on how they're dealing with certain issues that, that our city may have and you can ask them how, you know, successful they were, what they did and so on, it's really informative. And so this year, obviously with the pandemic, it was virtual. Our council gave me the opportunity to go as our voting delegate, there is a general session where we vote as a city. So I was able to attend a few sessions, one of them was the Sacramento Valley session was just basically Sacramento Valley cities, I caught about three quarters of that one. I went to another training, an AB one sixty, sixteen sixty-one, which is a required training for city officials. I went to a one about the impact of COVID on cities was very informative. And then the one I found most informative, which I tried to catch, which I did the first time, is the one on social media, which is very, always a very interesting topic and it was very well attended, I think there was maybe forty or fifty people attending the other ones and this was like a hundred and sixty attendance on this one. It talked about the use of social media by the city, you know, webpages, Facebook pages and stuff and what the do's and don'ts and, and all the, and it's really kind of the Wild West. And so there's, there's attorneys in there kind of talking about cases and stuff, so that was very informative. And then Friday, we had the general assembly. So the general assembly is basically, we have all the voting delegates, one from each city as a representative of that city. And in this general assembly, they had, they were introducing, there was a resolution being introduced by the city of Cerritos. And it was, it was very interesting, I, we didn't get a chance to talk about it as a council before I went, but it, it had to do with, what they were trying to do is lobby Congress to reconsider an amendment to the Communications Decency Act of nineteen ninety-six, so this deals with social media. So what they're trying to do, so there's a section within this act, it's section two thirty, and it deals with giving basically media platforms such as, say, Facebook, Twitter, whatever out there. It gives them basically immunity of liability if, for people performing criminal acts, so they can't be held liable. And there's been many court cases on this, and so the idea of this was to, the idea of this resolution was to basically, three things are asking, they were asking to, the platforms must establish parameters, I know that a lot of them have guidelines already, but they wanted to, platforms to be able to identify and remove content that they feel was, was basically criminal activity. Essentially, what they're afraid of is that in the twenty-five years since this, this bill's been passed, that they feel like these platforms no longer serve as just a public forum, but it's more rather used in a way that people can set up places and meeting points to perform criminal activity, let's say, for example, riots, which is really was, was the main topic of this thing and how it came about. And they're also concerned about these platforms using like sophisticated algorithms to promote content and push content to like-minded viewers and so on, which I know that that does occur. And so it's basically what's, what it's doing is they're, they feel like that these, these platforms, although they're not committing these crimes themselves, they're facilitating these crimes. And so the three things they're asking for was one, to identify and remove content. And number two was to provide law enforcement with information that, and in the apprehension and identification of people using their platforms. And then number three was that the failure to do so would result in liability by these companies. So it was a very interesting discussion, it was probably a couple of hours, there was about two hundred and fifty-seven people on the Zoom meeting. There probably was at least forty or fifty public speakers, I actually spoke myself for two minutes. So to hear the dialogue back and forth on this subject and some of the pros, and I just want to kind of, you know, tell, tell a little bit about what this is because I thought it was very, very interesting and how it affects, in spite of what's going on with our cities, with all our, you know, with the protesting that's turning into criminal activity and such, and there's, there's, you know, all the loss to businesses and property. But the, the pros were that it was helpful to law enforcement, that they were going to have another tool in their toolbox to fight, you know, people getting together and posting stuff and so they can come together and create criminal acts. And the other one was for some accountability of these companies against, you know, the damages to property and businesses and stuff that's resulting from riots, they want, they want somebody accountable. The cons, obviously, were wide, there was a lot of talk of First Amendment infringement, you know, that we, if we start asking this particular platform to, to censor and pull things out, then next, you know, we might have to ask like the AT&amp;T or Verizon to start, you know, doing the same for cellphone calls and it just, the, the cons were very, that there was a, it was very a gray area and, and, and the fact that they were asking these, these platforms to be the police and decide what content was, you know, was going to be pulled and if there was a strict threat of liability on these platforms that they would censor even further than they are now, I know a lot of people have seen or heard where people have posts pulled down and they said, well, what did I post, I wasn't offensive, I don't know why. And so to see that, you know, magnified times a hundred was, was the concern. So everybody agreed that it's a problem. When I spoke, again, I expressed sincerely that I, that I didn't, wasn't speaking on behalf of my council because we had not spoken about this. Other council members were coming on saying, you know, our council spoke about this and I'm going to be voting yes on this resolution today or we're going to be voting no, but the fact that we hadn't spoken and I was our voting delegate, I actually abstained from the vote when it came about because I just didn't feel it was appropriate. But I did make comment on my own and, and I just was basically saying like, you know, we're looking at ways to hold people accountable, but yet a lot of the people that are committing these acts aren't being held accountable, I feel like, you know, law enforcement's hands are tied in many respects. And so I feel like we're kind of trying to hold businesses accountable when we should maybe be going after the actual criminals. So I just touched on that, but in the end, we have two hundred and sixty participants, we needed a quorum of like two hundred and fifty-seven and we were short like four people. So the vote did move forward with an amendment and the amendment was that they changed it to where they were going to push Congress or recommend to Congress that Congress starts the discussion on this topic. Not so much actually go and change something, but start maybe committees or something where they start discussing the social media and their, their role and what's going on and, and all that. And so that was the, that was the amendment to the resolution that was, that was, that was pushed forward. It did pass narrowly, I don't remember the exact count, but it did pass narrowly, but only as a directive because there was not enough quorum to make it official. So anyways, interesting subject, very interesting, and it really shows you how government is really trying to play catch up with, with, you know, social media and it's really the Wild West out there and trying to figure out, you know, what our role is and what everybody's role is in that. So overall, good convention, very informative as usual, I know it was funner being in there in person last time, but, but I look forward to going again, so I would encourage anybody that can go next time, definitely do. And that's pretty much all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes, thank you. Tended a SAICOG board meeting on Thursday, the fifteenth. There's a lot of discussion, but the, the two action items were adopting a community design policy framework for the next funding round. And a couple of the highlights in it are that, or changes to the funding round are a streamlined application process, and I think we've talked about that a little bit before, increased non-competitive funding awards and some addition, an additional competitive housing category. So we will be getting applications, I believe in November. And so I'm sure we'll be right on top of that and, and doing what we can to get funding for, for our city. And then the, we did also talk about and approve the SAICOG Regional Funding Round Budget. It's a draft budget for programs that, that we as the SAICOG Board approved in the Funding Round Policy Framework. So just kind of some, some form, formal direction by the board and, and then we, and we're able to pass that along so that we can get started on, on those funding round issues. That was pretty much the highlight, I did want to point out again. I know I mentioned at the last meeting and I know staff has done some work on getting the word out and I've sent out several emails about the Youth Leadership Academy that SAICOG is, is hosting. And we had, saw it on some, some of our parks billboards, the advertisement for the youth in the grades nine through twelve are eligible to apply for the Youth Leadership Academy. You just go to saicog.org and on there, you learn that the youth that are selected will be a part of this board, be really nice to have one or two representatives from our city. This is the third year that, that SAICOG is doing it, I don't believe we've had a representative yet. So you know any high schoolers out there that are interested in, in learning more about government and about what their impact on government is, this is a great opportunity for that. And so I just want to encourage everyone out there, if you have children in high school, have them apply. And there'll be a short interview process and, and application process and then they'll have the opportunity. So that's all I have to report on that and on the SAICOG meeting and, and that's all I have for, for my full report.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, I have a air quality board meeting Thursday, so I'll report back on that. And we just had a few committee meetings with the youth commission, trying to work out how they're going to help with the night and who's going to take turns on the trunk or treat, so been working with them a little bit. And then we did have some committees, the beautification and some other things, meet with Barbara Payne to wish her well, that was covered in the Galt Herald, so that's about it.
Thank you. I also attended that Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting on October fourteenth. On that meeting, there was a couple of action items, we did pass it. And Public Works Director Mike Selling was very much involved on that Sacramento staff. I would like to ask him if he can explain in a brief for these two items, item number seven and item number nine on that. Mr. Selling, is he out there?
Yes. Excuse me. Yeah, there were two items of interest on that agenda and item number seven was essentially, you know, we're about ten years, a little more into the Measure A program, which started in two thousand and nine. And so there were several projects that have been delivered over that time period. And with the initial economic downturn right before Measure A was essentially renewed, coupled with, you know, what's going on recently with COVID and everything, the revenues are projected to be lower than were originally anticipated. Consequently, there's not as much funding available for capital improvement program projects. And so we've been working as a group at the staff level for several months now to try to come up with a reasonable solution that, that everyone can, can support. And so while the city of Galt and I think three other cities have essentially gotten our allocations of the CIP fundings through projects we've already delivered, there were the city of Sacramento, the JPA and gosh, the county, and I think one other that I may be forgetting. Anyway, so it was to basically come up with, how can we address this shortfall of funding and essentially the And essentially, what the board ended up adopting was a plan to to allocate amounts, revised amounts to those agencies. And and there would be a potential for additional revenues, assuming obviously if economic conditions turn around sometime in the next several years. Additional funding from SACOG, project savings on projects that are currently in the pipeline. So things like that, there's, all in all, it was about a sixty five million dollar shortfall is what they're looking at. And so they came up with a plan and the board agreed with that. So that was the one item. And then the other item is, is I kind of touched on, we're just over ten years into the Measure A program. And so the the program has a ten year review that's built in. So every ten years in the thirty year program, they will take a a look and and make any changes or or agencies have the opportunity to suggest changes. And so with the action taken on the former item, to basically come up with a program plan for the remaining CIP portion, this should be essentially kind of a minor review. And so that was, that was good because there was concern that, you know, if we couldn't come to a consensus on how to fund the remaining capital program, that there might be some significant changes in Measure A through the decennial ten year review. Anyway, the board approved both those items and so it's good news.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody, any question? If he's not, then I'm going to move the next agenda item, F, Information Consent Calendar. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar agenda item F two, three, four, six, except item number one and five?
So moved.
Motion moved by Councilmember Campion and second by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes with five to zero.
All right, now going back to F one on the consent calendar, Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to clarify a word and I apologize, Ms. Hubert. I didn't see this till late in the day and I did bring it to attention of City Manager. When I had spoke a public comment regarding the island annexation, I had asked about if there had been plans for infrastructure for Cornell Road as part of the improvement of Cornell Road. But it said it was that I'd asked about Lincoln Way. And I'm pretty certain I didn't. I mean, I could have, I don't think I would have made that error instead of the wrong street, but I, so I would like it corrected unless we want to go back and look at the video. But just for the, for the record, I want to note that I was concerned about Cornell's infrastructure, not Lincoln Way, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, I would also like to make a comment. I'm going to make a comment for the record that I am correcting the special minutes of September twenty ninth, changing City Manager Lozano to City Manager Heinz. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have, I have a motion to adopt the F one on consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Farmer, second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes with five to zero.
The next agenda item is F five, Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you. Again, apologize for late question. It just is a simple question regarding the the LEAP grant for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to use to hire the consultant to help us update our housing element. I was just curious of above and beyond the hundred and nineteen thousand that we are awarding the contract to the consultant, what the other thirty one thousand was going to be used for. And so if you could just tell me real quick, Craig, I appreciate that.
Sure, Mayor's Members of the Council. In March of this year, the City Council applied for a LEAP grant. This is from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I think one of the reasons why you see it's such a a big number is that the the housing element process, the expectation is that it's going to be a very inclusive and very open process. As part of that, the expectation was that there'd be money not only for the consultants for preparing the housing element, but there'd be money as well for the various city staffs. And so you see money in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand that will pay for the consultant. But this is money that also pays for city staff time and helps with the public workshops that we'll we'll be having in the upcoming year.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And this, this LEAP grant is a grant that we applied for a while back and then we were just awarded. And this is basically us voting on accepting that money, correct?
That is correct. And the one great thing about this grant was this is a project that the city needs to do. And it's funding that's coming from the state and rather than the city having to pay for it, we get money to do a project that we have to do. So this is great for the community.
All right. Thank you, Craig, for answering those questions.
Thank you. Anybody, any question? If he's not, is there any motion to adopt F five on consent calendar?
A move.
Second.
Motion move by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes with five to zero.
Next agenda item, Schedule Matter Notice of Public Hearing. There is no notice of public hearing. Regular calendar. City Manager's Office, Subject Coronavirus COVID nineteen update, Mr. Heinz.
All right, Mayor, I'm trying to get the right screen to come up.
Okay.
All right. Very good, very good. City Manager Lorenzo Heinz, we're going to give the the update as of October twentieth or as of today. So we've got statistics here for Sac County as well as Galt. And as you can see, our Sac, our Sac County cases are still on the rise. They're up by six percent since our last council meeting. The number of folks we've lost as a result of this in the county have gone up nine percent. Our cases here in Galt have risen four percent since our last council meeting. And the number of folks that we've lost in Galt has held at seven as a result of this pandemic. The state updated the tier status numbers today and Sacramento County is currently at four point four new COVID cases, new new COVID positive cases per a hundred thousand residents and a two point five percent positivity rate. To get to Orange, which the entire county is striving to get to by the end of October. To get to Orange, we must be below four percent of four new cases per a hundred thousand residents. So we're close, but we're not there. And continuing to keep our positivity rate under four point nine percent. And we've already met that particular metric. We just need to work on the the new cases per a hundred thousand residents. So we're getting close to qualifying for Orange. And again, there is a countywide effort to go to Orange by the end of October. Because the county maintained the daily case rate and the positivity rate in the red tier for two consecutive weeks, we have met the state criterion for all school grade levels to conduct in-person instruction if they so choose within prescribed guidelines. Also, the State Department of Health helped release new guidance for public gatherings on October ninth. While the county, Sacramento County, continues to discourage social gatherings of non-household members, they did update the guidance to reflect the state changes. The new guidance indicates that gatherings should be limited, limit the size of the same members. And I'm sorry, they should limit the size to the same household members and no more than members from three different households. And we have some other criterion as well. Gathering should only be outdoors and less than two hours. Don't gather if you feel sick or in a high risk category. Account for those in attendance or contact tracing if needed. Anyone who develops COVID nineteen within forty eight hours of of the gathering, gathering should notify other attendees to get tested. Practice social distancing measures, six foot distancing, good hand hygiene, wear face coverings properly, and limit activities that cause respiratory droplets to increase and be released into the air. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks on the coronavirus update.
Thank you. Anybody, any council member, any question on the coronavirus? If he's not, then I'm going to move the next agenda item. Human Resources Department, subject approval of part-time temporary classification salary schedule for calendar year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Ms. Van Stein.
Yes, good evening, Council and Mayor. Before you this evening, the resolution to adopt and approve the salary schedules for the part-time and temporary job classifications at the city. There is an Exhibit A, which is the salary schedules, which would be effective January first of twenty twenty one. And Exhibit B is the salary schedule for January first, twenty twenty two. The reason for the salary schedule updates are due to the upcoming California state minimum wage increases. Back in April of twenty sixteen, the then-Governor Jerry Brown had signed legislation to increase the minimum wage by a dollar each year, beginning in twenty seventeen until twenty twenty two. So from twenty seventeen until this year, twenty twenty, the city of Galt salary schedules were in compliance because either our step one or step two pay rates were at or above the minimum wage. However, beginning next year in twenty twenty one, we do need to make amendments to ensure we're paying at least fourteen dollars per hour. And then effective January first of twenty twenty two, the city will need to pay a minimum of fifteen dollars per hour. The amended job classification salaries, they're predominantly in the Parks and Recreation Department. And a vast majority of the positions are temporary with no benefits or PERS roll-up costs to the city. And these changes were anticipated and included in the annual budgets for the next two fiscal years. And that those budgets were adopted by City Council on June second of this year. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I just have one quick question that just kind of dawned on me. I know there are no PERS roll-up costs or anything like that involved with this, but are there other costs associated with human resources management related to the increase in hourly wage? And and I guess what I'm getting at is more the question of liability insurance or workers' comp insurance. Is it, do we have any of those things that are attached to as a percentage of salary?
Yeah, the only two benefit items attached to temporary positions are workers' compensation, like you said. And we also have to do the Medicare contribution. So the temporary employees do not participate in social security. We don't have PERS for them. The temporary employees do have to contribute seven and a half percent to PARS. So that's a separate retirement plan that the city had set up for temporary employees only.
Okay. I I appreciate that. I I just want the public to to know that, you know, it's not, not only is it a minimum wage increase or an increase in in wages, whether it's minimum or not, but there are also other things tied to that that are are expenses that are borne by the city. And so when you look at salaries and things of that nature, there's always that extra piece to it. And so that most people aren't aware of. So I wanted to kind of put that out. Appreciate it.
Sure.
I have a quick question for you, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we, and maybe this is a question for Claire, and I'm sure this, we probably covered this before, but I'm just curious, just approximate what the impact on our budget is is estimated to be next year. And then the, and maybe a forecast for the year after by by just the simple increase in the minimum wage and how many staff we have that are paid that. Do we know? Have we talked about that?
This is Claire, the Finance Director. I don't recall what the impact was because it was embedded in all of the schedules of the budgets. I do not recall what that incremental increase was each year for this minimum wage increase.
Okay, how many, how many part-time, how many minimum wage employees do we have work for the city right now?
Well, I ran a report a couple of weeks ago. We have about one hundred and eleven employees that fall within these particular job classifications. And ninety seven out of the one hundred and eleven are all temporary. Like I mentioned, they don't have any of those roll-up costs tied to them. So we do have, we do have a small handful of positions that are in, that are in budgeted part-time positions. Those are positions that we know work between twenty and thirty six hours a week. Those particular people are enrolled in PERS from day one.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Claire.
Councilmember Campion.
No comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamson.
Thank you. No comment.
Stephanie, I have just a comment or just a question. You know, when the salary going to increase in January, fourteen dollar, right? And all of our temporary employees are, they have like in minimum wages and they also have a little bit higher than minimum wages.
Yes.
Any employees have a right now is more than minimum wages, when minimum wage is going to fourteen, how are you going to deal with these people? They can leave on a fourteen or they can have same and increase whatever they, right now.
So what we're looking at is, just as an example, some people are in a position at top step today, which is only thirteen eighty nine an hour. And so we roll out the new salary schedule, January first, we'll just bring them to step one, which is fourteen dollars an hour.
Okay, that's, that's just for the clarification.
Okay.
Any public comment? I would like to open a public comment. No, is there anybody?
Pardon me. Yeah, we have no public comment on the attendee side, no raised hands at this time.
Tina, there is any written public comment?
No written public comments.
All right, thank you. Any council member, any other comment? If he's not, then I would like to motion to adopt adopt the agenda item H two on the, on the regular calendar. Anybody make a motion on that?
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Motion moved by Vice Mayor Lozano.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passing with five to zero. Uh, next end item, communication. Any communication?
Not at this time.
Thank you. City Clerks' Board?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Comments by staff, Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mayor Sandu, um, Lorenzo Heinz, City Manager. Um, I have three items to, um, go over today, um, during our staff comments. And one of those items will involve a report from the Galt PD, our Community Development Department. Uh, the first item is, uh, Councilmember Campion at our, at our last meeting indicated that, uh, he would like to review or and remind fellow council members of section two-point-four, uh, entitled Request for Staff Resources from the City Council, City Council's procedural guidelines. And the section reads that the City Councilmember requests for research or other staff work shall be directed to the City Manager or City Attorney regarding legal matters, or the City Clerk regarding matters within a clerk's authority. If no more than two hours of staff time will be required to complete the task project requested by the council member, the item will be placed on the next agenda to ask the council if time should be spent um, on the task or item. Staff memos prepared in response to council member inquiries shall be distributed to all council members, the City Manager, and the City Attorney. Are there any questions on that particular, um, section of the procedural guidelines? Okay. Then I'll move on to my, uh, my next statement. Our Corillian Boulevard action from the August eighteenth, twenty twenty council meeting. Uh, during the August eighteenth, twenty twenty council meeting, uh, council directed staff to return the proposal for Corillian Boulevard modifications back to the Planning Commission for additional input. Um, council further directed staff to work with the Planning Commission to bring back a revised plan for Corillian to the City Council within two months. Uh, due to an oversight, this matter has not been presented to the Planning Commission as of this date. Uh, we plan to place the item on the November twelfth, uh, Planning Commission agenda, and we will return the item to the council after the Planning Commission process is completed. And I'm going to share my screen for the next presentation. During the October sixth City Council meeting, thirteen public comments from Galt residents addressed this, the council regarding their concerns about an address on Oberlin Way. This presentation will provide a summary of the issues as well as a summary of the Police Department's efforts to address issues within this particular area. All of the statistics that are provided in this report are from January first, twenty nineteen through October eighth, twenty twenty. Uh, the accuracy, accuracy of the data, uh, may be impacted by, uh, some, um, I, information technology issues that we've, that we've encountered in the past. So the issues of concern that were presented to council were unsafe conditions due to hoarding in this area, drug sales, suspicious persons or vehicles, non-operational or unsafe vehicles, and child neglect. Uh, these are pretty serious concerns, and we thought it best that the Galt PD and our Community Development Department, uh, briefed the council on actions that they've taken in this area. We've also got statistics to give the council context for the issues that we've seen in this area in comparison to, uh, the issues that we've seen citywide. And so I'm going to turn this over to the Galt PD and to Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, and City Council Chief Todd Sockman from, uh, the Police Department. So, the issues that, in the scope of service specifically with the Police Department would be the illegal parking, uh, drug enforcement efforts, and child neglect and endangerment. So many of the items that were brought forward to council are quality-of-life issues. And so, uh, we work hand-in-hand with our code enforcement to make sure that, uh, uh, we address any concerns or issues that come forward. Uh, one of the great things about living in the City of Galt is that, uh, your staff, uh, the Police Department staff, Community Development, we respond to all, uh, concerns that are brought forward to our department. Unlike some of the bigger cities that, uh, are in our surrounding areas where they don't have the opportunity, the manpower, or the, uh, um, time to address some of these issues, we, uh, answer every call for service that come into our, our department. Next slide, please. So the challenges and limitations, um, so what was brought forward was, uh, concerns about the specific area and, uh, the feeling of a lack of response. So, um, the items brought forward on, and in this area have, um, um, come forward over a number of years, and whenever the calls for service come into the Police Department, uh, they've been addressed. And some of the items, um, are, are fixed, and there are certain things that we, actions that we take, uh, within the uh, scope of the penal code and what the law allows. So we'll talk about a few of those things. A seventy-two-hour toes. When you got a vehicle that is reported to be abandoned on any city street, uh, in the state of California, uh, we are required to go out and put a seventy-two-hour notice on that vehicle, uh, giving the owner of that vehicle an opportunity to move it. And so, uh, what, uh, happens is, is that someone who, uh, perhaps owns a lot of cars, has to park them on the street, not able to, uh, uh, placement their garage or their driveway, um, that you get neighborhood complaints and concerns. Uh, even recently, you know, you, we've all heard of RVs parking in neighborhoods and boats and everything else. Uh, so we receive those complaints. We go out and put those seventy-two-hour notice on those, uh, vehicles. And if they move them, when we go about seventy-two hours later, then, um, uh, then we have to re-tag them. We have to give them a new seventy-two-hour notice. Um, other issues, uh, so there, I'll just go down the list. So Prop forty-seven, Prop forty-seven was that to keep the, um, uh, Keep Kids Safe Act of, uh, two thousand fourteen voter initiative that was voted into place. And so that decriminalized a lot of the drug activity, and that changed the scope of the ability to go in and, uh, get some of the search warrants that we used to be able to get, uh, uh, when, uh, drugs were actually a felony. Uh, but despite all that, there's been a, a great deal of effort by our officers, whatever we give, receive a complaint, uh, to go out and, and take the appropriate actions as, as necessary. And then, uh, the other one, uh, that came forward was, um, uh, Child Protective Services. So in order for Child Protective Services to respond to any, um, school or house or wherever a child might be in danger, it requires a mandatory reporter to write a report. So, uh, through, um, calls for service and/or observations by the officers, um, then Child Protective Services comes in. Once they arrive on scene, their experts are the ones to make a determination whether, uh, the conditions for the child, uh, are safe or not. And then they also are the ones that make the determination whether that child, uh, will remain in that home, whether there's, uh, home visits and home care that's associated with that. Uh, that falls under the, uh, the privy of, um, Child Protective Services. We're just the, uh, the catalyst, if you will, of what brings CPS to a location. So, uh, and then next thing, uh, the, what, on the slide is the Fourth Amendment. So a lot of the complaints are, you just need to go into the house, you need to go check out what's going on in that, uh, specific location. So, uh, there's a number of ways that Police Departments can go in. Uh, if we have a search warrant, uh, we have consent, or there's a fresh felony, uh, in progress, then of course we can go in, uh, to those residences and stuff like that. But, uh, most of the time in these conditions, when you're talking about issues related to hoarding and, and things of that nature, the, it's not a police department that, uh, um, would go in there. So, um, and then, you know, I, on the slide, it does talk about staff, uh, uh, staffing levels and stuff, but I've already addressed that. The fact is, is that our police officers do a really great job of making sure that they go in and, uh, and they handle all the calls for service with the staff that we have. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so the Police Department efforts, there's a total of, uh, ninety-four cases in this specific, uh, area of, uh, Oberlin. And you can see here on the slide, uh, what some of those cases are. Uh, next slide, please. So since January of two thousand nineteen, there's been a total of nine cases. Uh, there's found property, uh, a child abuse case, impersonated police officer, towed vehicles, um, information reports, and then a warrant arrest. Next slide, please. Uh, so if you're talking about the overall area of Oberlin, um, you, it's, there's been a total of ninety-four cases since January of two thousand nineteen. That is a point two-four percent of the overall calls for service and activity, uh, that the Police Department handles. Um, and those, uh, there've been an arrest, uh, in that area also. So, but slide self-explanatory. We, we, uh, it is a small portion of the activity that occurs in our city. Next slide, please. And so, uh, the efforts of the Police Department, so early on in, um, just, uh, right after COVID kicked off, uh, there were some concerns that come forward to the Police Department. We offered to do, uh, phone conversa, uh, meetings. Because of COVID, we couldn't have in-person meetings. Uh, that wasn't, um, going to work for the complainants. And so, uh, fast forward to, uh, more recent times, where some of the restrictions have, uh, changed. Uh, instead of a Zoom meeting, they wanted an in-person meeting, and we've, uh, been working with, um, the neighborhood, uh, on their concerns. And, um, so we've had our community service officer, uh, and our lieutenant out there, and, uh, code enforcement has been involved in a lot of those efforts. Uh, next slide, please. This kind of outlines the, um, the efforts to, to date. And so, um, on October twelfth, uh, due to follow-up of the uh, Police Department, specifically with some of the issues that were out in front of, uh, the specific residents and, and in the area, um, uh, the, the issues have been resolved for now, as far as some of the, the blight. And, um, so the next slide is just kind of a overview of the other agencies that have been involved. And, uh, that concludes my portion of this presentation. I'm going to turn it over to, uh, uh, Community Development now with Craig Hoffman.
Uh, and council members, looking at our code enforcement efforts, uh, since about two thousand ten, we have had over, uh, seventeen code enforcement complaints, typically about one to two per year. And when we get these calls, uh, we do go out on site, and our records show that those have been resolved and the complaint closed in the past. In the last three years, uh, in two thousand eighteen, we've seen, uh, two cases, and two thousand nineteen, one case, and two thousand twenty-one case. And we do try to reach out to residents and indicate that if you're seeing something, or if you have a concern, give us a call. Uh, we have been trying to be very much more active in that neighborhood and trying to work with the, the property resident. And, uh, the complaint that we have had has been satisfied. But we take it very serious when we get a call, and, and we do look to abate any of the violations. And I think you see typically the type of calls that we've received recently and in the past in regard to inoperable vehicles, in junk and rubbish in the front yard, as well as hoarding concerns. So those are something we take very serious. And we have been, uh, there has been active coordination between the Police Department and code enforcement. Uh, I think they're working very well together, uh, going out to some various neighborhoods, and this one included. Seeing what item might be something that could be a code enforcement item, uh, typically on private property. And then what items the Police Department can help out, typically public, whether that's in the street or some other, uh, penal code issue. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, thank you, Chief Sockman, and thank you, uh, Mr. Hoffman. Um, so Mayor, that concludes our presentation regarding that, uh, the issues that were brought up at, uh, last week's, um, council meeting, or, um, our last council meeting. Uh, this is not a discussion item, and so we just wanted to give you an update. Uh, so, um, if council wants to discuss it further, we'll have to agendize this. But we just wanted to give you an update on our efforts and also give you some context um, for the issues that are going on this area versus, uh, uh, issues that are going on citywide. And so, uh, I'm going to move on to some of the other staff, and, and so let's start with, um, uh, Stephanie Van Stein, uh, our Director of HR. Do you have any comments?
Uh, no other comments this evening.
All right. Then we'll go to our Parks Director, Armando Solis.
Hello, everybody. I just, um, wanted to let people know that, uh, the state has, uh, allowed playgrounds to be reopened. Uh, they've been open since, uh, last week. Um, and, um, we've opened Greer Basin starting yesterday, uh, to the public. And, uh, I'd like to thank my park staff that have been doing an incredible job trying to fill in a little bit of the extra mowing, uh, to try and, uh, keep the grass down. They've, uh, added that on to their, uh, plate, and they're doing a great job. So, that's it.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Let's go to, uh, Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman.
Uh, nothing tonight. Uh, we will have several items coming up, uh, before you in, in, uh, December and January, early, uh, early next year, but, uh, look forward to working with you all. And I think, again, the request to make sure that the process is very inclusive and, and transparent. We are looking to make sure that as items come before you, that we have had a process that's meaningful. So thank you so much.
Very good. Finance Director, Claire Tyson?
Thank you. I have nothing to report except to congratulate the chief on his upcoming retirement.
Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez?
No, I don't have anything to add this evening, but I too congratulate the chief. I am going to miss you. You've been great to work with. I hope that you enjoy your new journey.
Public Works Director, Mike Selling?
Yeah, I think, uh, we've got a bit of a tag team going on in this mowing. Uh, I think, uh, the goats have kind of finished in the gulch, and, and I think we were able to, uh, get some additional miscellaneous areas where we're utilizing them as well. So between, I think, Armando's crew and the goats, uh, we're, uh, we're trying to keep a handle on the, uh, on the vegetation. So, um, yeah, as far as the chief goes, you know, I guess I'll just take a quick moment. You know, chief, uh, when I first met you, I guess in an interview about two years ago, when I interviewed for the city, uh, I mean, my first impression was, wow, this guy's a pretty intimidating guy. And maybe that was the uniform or your stature or what, I don't know. But, uh, but then, uh, you know, I, uh, I think from the first director's meeting that I attended, uh, you know, you're just a straightforward, straight shooter, no-nonsense, uh, kind of guy, and, uh, get the job done. And I thought, wow, all right, this is a guy I can definitely work with. And then, uh, you know, you're an eighties music fan and and kind of a craft beer guy, too. I just said, you know what? This is meant to be. So gonna miss you. And I think, you know, even though it's been a short amount of time, I think that you're definitely someone that I'll I'll keep in touch with going forward and not just for the beer. So congratulations on your retirement and and your 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 new location. So we'll look forward to seeing and hearing from you. Thanks.
All right. City Attorney Kimberly Hood.
Thank you. No, I have nothing except just to congratulate the chief on his retirement. And it's been great working with you all these years. And I really, I wish you well. We will miss you.
And before I introduce Chief Sockman, I just wanted to say it's it's been it's been a pleasure. It's been a brief pleasure. But it's been a pleasure. I, as an outside candidate for this particular position, had done my fair amount of due diligence here about the staff and some of the issues here at the City of Galt. And the Galt PD always came up as top notch. And and so I was looking forward to working with you for a long term. But what turned what I was hoping was at least four or five years would actually turned out to be a couple of months. So but it's been a pleasure, sir. I've learned from you in the short time that we've been together. And my my congratulations to you and and best on your retirement. And my congratulations to running a a very smooth selling and smooth sailing and very efficient police department. And and so that department has your fingerprints on it, and they will continue to do good work for the community. So thank you, sir. I'm going to miss you. And the eighties music references as well. Now, any of the staff that has gone and made comments before we started the Chief Sockman retirement roast, if you wanted to say anything more, feel free to pipe in before I turn it over to them.
I'm sorry, chief, I I forgot this evening was your last council meeting. You know, I'm with Mike. I met the chief during the interview process, and he's a very confident individual. But I think once you start working with him, you realize what a great guy he is. He's a big family person. And I just really appreciate that about him. So I'm definitely going to miss you, chief, but wish you the best.
I was just gonna add that usually we
Never seen you smile.
I was gonna say, we usually do music trivia. Now, without Todd being there, it's going to actually open up the ability for some of us to actually answer some questions. So but I am going to miss you, Todd.
Never seen you smile so much, chief. I didn't, I'm sure you probably broke your face a couple of times. Because I hadn't seen you smile that that much in the five years you've been here. Enjoy your next, I guess, career. And take care.
Very good. In case the council and the public are wondering, we typically start our executive team meeting off with at least three or four trivia questions to sort of break the ice. So those questions, some of those questions stray into eighties music and which the chief has a reputation of sort of dominating that category. So as as Director Hoffman mentioned, we'll look forward to actually being able to compete in that area because we could not compete with the chief in that particular area. All right. So without further ado, Chief Sockman, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, I was actually really looking forward to kind of just smoothly stepping out, not having any comments at all. I just got a text from one lieutenant saying you thought you were going to get away with it, didn't you? And so what I wanted to say is, you know, these last four and a half years have been absolutely incredible. Thirty-three years of public service. I was talking to a friend of mine today. And, you know, I put my first uniform on and enforced my first law back in nineteen eighty-seven. And so, you know, it's just been an honor to serve. What I want to say about Galt is Galt has some beautiful people and a really strong sense of community. And you know, our police department loves this community and proves it every day with their positive proactive efforts. And so and then the other thing that I really am inspired about in the city and the police department is that we have some strong leaders in our department dedicated to this, the greatest profession. I have said that before, and I'll say it again, that law enforcement is truly the greatest profession. You know, I'm just very proud of the men and women of the Galt Police Department. And, you know, I'm going to miss this life of service. I'm going to really miss the camaraderie. I'm going to miss the friendship. And quite honestly, I'm going to miss all of you. I mean, just the 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 tight-knit group that we have here in the, you know, the council meetings and our director meetings, and the fact that everyone comes together and works on projects together as one. It's just it's inspiring. I love it. And so I just want to thank you all for your continued support. And then the last thing is, again, I'm just definitely going to miss all of you. And I'm going to miss this life of service.
All right. Thank you, chief. Tina, our city clerk, Tina Hubert, our city clerk, any comments?
I was just going to say congratulations to Todd and I'm kind of jealous, meaning that we're the same age and good luck.
And Rose Rodeacker.
Congratulations, chief. We're going to miss you. That's all I got for tonight.
All right. Mayor Sandu, that concludes staff comments for tonight.
Thank you. The next end item is comments by city council members. Vice Mayor Lisanne.
Yeah, I I just want to comment on a couple of things. First of all, the goats, I've gotten a lot of community feedback on the fact that they love the fact that we're running the goats through the canals. You know, I had somebody say to me something to the effect of hopefully that will calm the the desire for nefarious activity in the in the canals. And I and I agree. I think once that shrubs are cut down and the grass is, you know, virtually mowed by the by the goats, I think it'll work work out well for us. So thank you to staff for that. Also, I want to thank Mr. Hoffman. We had I had a resident call this last week about an issue, a code enforcement issue. And he was right on it and really helped to get kind of down to the bottom of the issue. And so Craig Hoffman, thank you so much for your for your help with that issue. And and I'm sure the citizen appreciated your your contact with her. So thank you. And then lastly, just to Chief Sockman, are you still there? Yeah, there you are. Hey, thanks. Thanks for your service. When you first were 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 selected to come to the City of Galt, you know, the the law enforcement community is kind of a small community, yet large. And and, you know, I have friends that worked with you over in your former agency. And you know, we always talk about, you know, in law enforcement, you have a jacket, and that's essentially, it's a reputation. And so I did some poke, I I've never told you this, but I did some poking around. And and everybody said the same thing, you know, it was straight shooter will get things done. Somebody who is of high moral character, very professional in in acting and in appearance. And one person said he will engulf himself in a community and and have the community surround him. And I and and so I thought, oh, that's 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 kind of cool. Well, let's see how that all shakes out. And that's exactly what we got, I think. You know, there are many examples. But, you know, the community events, when we were having those, you were out there with you know, your your costume on for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary, our birthday celebration that we had, and just all the things that you do to participate in the community. I also want to thank you for involving your family in our community. Gina was at many events. I know we've had opportunities to talk with you and her and 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 so we appreciate your work. We'll also appreciate the fact that that you ran a an organization. And it's not an easy time to be the head of an organization, certainly in law enforcement. And and, you know, that's not just recent times, but in the last several years. And so it takes somebody special. And we thank you for your service here and all that you've done for our community. And I hope you enjoy retirement. I know you will, and you'll have a long retirement, I'm sure. And remember, the goal in retirement is to to get as much money back out of PERS that you can. And so stay healthy, do what you can to enjoy your family and all your other hobbies. And and thank you so much for your service and job well done. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I do have a couple of things. In the past couple of weeks, I've had a couple of things happen here personally in my neighborhood. And I just wanted to thank staff. First Public Works, I, for whatever reason, I had a water line break on my main, could not shut it off. And they were out there within ten minutes. But I had water going down the street and wasn't really sure, never had an incident like that, and ended up calling the police department. I found out that that's who you call. They contacted Public Works, and that fellow was there within ten minutes, did a great job, shut it off, got it fixed. It was done. So I just wanted to say thanks to Public Works and their staff. And and Mike, please let them know that I I really appreciate their their the great job they did and and the amount of time it took was incredibly quick, in my opinion. Secondly, on a sadder note, one of my neighbors passed this last week, and police and fire were there early in the morning. I got a knock at the door. They're elderly, close friends. Police officer was there. And so I went over to the the spouse that asked for me. But I was impressed with the officer's empathy and manner in which they handled a very difficult situation, because we had to wait there until the coroner showed up. And it was it was awkward, but they they made it as good as it could be. And I wanted to to thank the chief and have him thank the officers for their for their work. They they do all types of things. And this is one where you got to see a softer side. And I was very, very impressed. On a different note, then, chief, congratulations on your retirement. Hope you enjoy it. Maybe you could move to Galt, run for council, and, you know, do something like that, or run for city council in whatever community you're in. Just joking. Enjoy yourself and enjoyed working with you. And you've done a wonderful job with the department since your time with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson.
Well, I just want to say thank you, chief. Seems like your tenure was a little bit longer than mine, just a hair longer. Council does not hire the chief, even though some of the incoming people think they do. It's a city manager job. But you came in, you made a few changes. You changed how we do events. No more security guards. You want a police there. You changed council meetings that you wanted a sergeant of arms there. And even I sometimes, even though I felt like that was overkill, I know you had our safety utmost first in your mind. And I appreciate that. And you didn't want to be, for lack of a better term, Gilroy or one of those cities where things like that happen. And you were really there to protect us and make sure we stay safe. And I really, really appreciate that. I am going to miss your daughters. They're a lot of fun. And you've done a great job raising them. And you came in like Andy Griffith, because of the red hair, I guess, and wanted to be in a town, small town, where everybody knew you. And I think everybody did. And when you were out at these events, everybody knew you and everybody loved you. So we're going to miss you. We should stay a little bit longer. It's going to be interesting search and just have a blast in retirement and and post a few more things on on certain things so we can keep an eye on you.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank you, all the staff, working hard out there and doing a great job and doing good work with Mr. Heinz. Mr. Heinz have a good step. So that's why he's in a good position. The other thing I really liken today or or before, I really sad and happy. Sad means we are losing a good person from the department or pre-chief. And the happiest, he can go to retirement. And he will be like me, I already retired for ten years ago. You know what's the life with with retirement and when you're working with somebody? And he can feel after, on number six, how the way he can feel a freedom. I would like to thank you, Police Chief Sockman, for all his hard work and dedicated service to our city. He has been an excellent leader during his time with us and contributed so much to our community. It has been a pleasure working with when I was a citizen, when I was a council member, or I'm a mayor. He that that's his, that's his approach. He approached it the same way. It's no matter what your position is. That's why all the citizens here in Galt, they praise him. As an as an citizen, I hope you get spend more time with your family and relaxing more time. I wish you have a happy retirement. Thank you for your service. Stay safe, stay healthy, and socially distinct. And I believe this is your last meeting. We can miss you. Thank you, chief. Thank you for your service. Anybody have any question, any comment?
Yeah, you missed me, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. A couple of things I had. First off, I wanted to thank the the Galt Sunrise Rotary for a cleanup day that they organized with the Impact Group, which is a spin off of the Rotary for Youth. But the Rotary reached out and asked me to come and help on October tenth. They they had a ton of people over at a house in Galt where the lady had some health issues and had some just some 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 things going on with her life. And she was being code enforced for yard. And so when I arrived, there was like a small army there. And it was really impressive to have all those people there. A lot of them were youth teenagers helping out with pulling weeds. And and they they went from the front yard to the back. It was great. So I just want to say a big shout out to the Galt Sunrise Rotary for all the people that were there. I don't even remember all their names, but and to Grace Malson, actually, for reaching out to me and inviting me over for that. And then to Parks and Rec, Armando, for thanks for the additional mowing. I I know Mike Selling mentioned it, too. Both of you, have you guys have coordinated with that with whether it be goats or people or whatever. Appreciate all the extra effort on that. And then last to the chief. Yeah, I'm going to miss you, chief. You've done a good job. I think primarily, one of the things I think I've mentioned before is I really appreciate kind of what you've done with really the community aspect of the police department, I guess, we'd call it, where and I know that that's been done through social media and and just your leadership, where you're you're really making you know, the community feel more personable with the police department, I guess would be a good word. I like the fact that you know, you they're more informational, you know, reaching out to the community, just with the 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 posts about visiting with the children here and there on things and just, you know, all that, just really, I like the fact that our citizens can can say, you know, there's officer so and so, instead of saying, oh, there's the police or there's the cops, you know, I think it really makes our town feel like that small town, which is all important, everybody, by by the PD having that relationship with the community. And I think you've been a big part of that. And so I think like someone said earlier, you definitely get your fingerprint on the department. So I honestly think you're going to be bored in retirement.
So I honestly think you're going to be bored in retirement. So I'm just saying, I don't see how you could actually walk away. And as an age, just as an eighties music reference, you must clearly not be a Rick Astley fan because you're clearly giving us up, saying goodbye, deserting us and all those things. So, and as Bon Jovi said, don't say goodbye. So you must not be a Bon Jovi fan either. But anyways, it's been good. I'm sure I'll chat with you before you're gone completely. But congratulations on your retirement, chief. And thank you, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody from the council or anybody from the staff want to make any comment before we adjourn? Thank you. If he's not, I just make a reminder, stay safe, stay healthy, keep in social distance. And now I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.